Okay. Any other questions or discussion? That was a long discussion for this item, but I think it was a good discussion. Mr. Hawley, I believe we need to vote on those appointments.
Yes. Ms. Pennitt?
Yes.
Dr. Swetchnow?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Absolutely.
Mr. Doherty?
I'm gonna have a lot of problems with things like this as we've been along because I don't know these people, except for maybe one or two of them. I am comfortable that it was a reasonably sound process to so back to them. And on that base, I will vote.
That was suspenseful, Mr. Doherty. You froze up just before you sent her vote.
I'm sorry, yeah, froze up here, but I said yes. On the basis of a good process, I said yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Lawrence?
Yes. I think that's all of us now, right? Motion carried. Now we'll move into the recognition portion of our meeting. Dr. Kraus?
So every quarter, every grade level in this district selects a student to be recognized for My Voice, My Choice. It's a campaign that has been, gosh, I don't even know how long it's been going on. It's certainly part of the culture here long before I arrived on the scene. But My Voice, My Choice is focused on children, teaching children, encouraging children to be part of a positive school culture. It's related to our bullying program. We talk about being an upstander and stepping in when you see something that's not right. About being a friend, about reaching out to students who may not be asking for help, but it's about inclusion. It's just all the great qualities that you hope, that as a parent, you would hope to hear about your child. So we recognize students quarterly. We do that typically at halftime of athletic. We do a football game in the fall. We do a basketball game. I think this year we did a soccer game. So we do those, we recognize those in public. And the fourth one is always at our board meeting. So normally, we get to see their faces. We get to meet their families, and we get to congratulate them for being just good humans and just really important part of school is learning those things. So right now, while you can't see them, I know that many of those families are watching this. We invited them to watch for this recognition. And Jamie Gordon is sort of the chair of this, and she has put together a short presentation to recognize each of our My Voice, My Choice honorees here in the fourth quarter. And we start with our ladies' heads, and then we move right up to high school. So, Mr. Knapp, can you play that link that's in the board docs for us?
Hey, Loveland Tigers, did you know we have some pretty amazing students doing some pretty amazing things to make this world a better place? Well, we do, and today we celebrate that. The My Voice, My Choice campaign is focused on creating a positive school climate for all students. Specifically, we are calling on our students to stand up for those peers through their words and actions. Today, we are recognizing students from each building embodying principles of My Voice, My Choice. Thank you for all you do to make Loveland a better place.
So normally, we would have them up, and they could get their certificate, and we could clap for all of them. So I hope they're all watching with their parents, so if we could just clap for all of these great kids. It's so nice to see them, and I miss their little faces so much, so it's great to see their pictures. So if you're watching students, these are the things, you know, school is so much about academics and making sure that you're doing your homework and trying your best. All of those things are really important. But almost more important, but for sure equally important, is just really being kind and making sure that students feel included and that you're a positive member of our school culture. We are so appreciative of you. Wish you were here in person for us to shake your hand and take hand to your certificate. I know that you've gotten those certificates. And to the parents, thanks for raising great little people and sharing them with us. So it's such a pleasure to be able to take a moment to recognize people for being just good citizens and really helping our schools be better. So, those are also attached to the board agenda. For people to see if they missed it, in the video, the link is yours to share with their cute little faces.
Amy, I just gotta tell you, I watched this the other day. I just loved it. I think there are 34 students on the list by my count. And unless there's siblings there, we've got 68 parents who had a role in creating these, you know, this wonderful caring attitude, which is so needed out there. I'm just very, very proud of the young people that were just showcased, very proud of the parents. And a big shout out to Jamie Gordon for putting this thing together. Well done, nicely done, thoughtfully done.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you all. Amy, I just wanted to say, as you did, when we see them in person, it's always been great to be able to shake their hands and see these young people who are gonna be future leaders and very kind, thoughtful future leaders. Actually, seeing them on the video this time was probably better than in person because we all would have had to have masks on, and we couldn't have shaken hands. And so we got to see all those beautiful smiles. So thank you very much.
My favorite part about My Voice, My Choice is I like to say our bench is deep. We do not have to work hard to get the nominees. For a year, hardly seems enough. Maybe there's repeaters, I don't know, but I certainly have never noticed a repeater. So our bench is deep with great students, and it's a pleasure. So thanks to the students who are watching right now for being a part of this.
Okay, and I think we also have retirement recognition this evening, right, Amy?
I do, and I'll let Robin pop in on this one. You know, typically, in real life, we would come together, we would invite our retirees and present them with a gift, and their supervisor, their principal would say a few words about them. Because it's this way, we are going to, individual supervisors are going to, we're gonna go out in a little pack, like you've seen the schools do to do recognitions and deliver some of those things. But I'll let Robin speak a little bit to the list, even though they're not here for us to celebrate their service and our gratitude with them tonight. You're on mute, Robin.
I'm challenged with that, for sure. Okay, so we don't have that many on our list this year. This includes anyone who retired from last June, cleared through now. So it's not necessarily just those from this school year. So that includes, we have Lou Ann Downey, who was our registrar. She was with us for four years. In transportation, we have Bill Carrier and Al Fay, who were drivers for us, and Robert Johnson, who's a mechanic. At L E C C, we have Joanne Homan and Mary Rose. I have to do a big shout out to Mary Rose. This is 41 years. She has been with us, been with the district, and that's amazing. We had a great time honoring her at that opening day, and I think she's a little embarrassed about it. We have Bobby Stecky from L E S, and from the intermediate school, Colleen Betts. And Helen McCune at L M S, Susan McConney. And from the high school, Pam Baumatt and Vera Hudson. And we wish we were able to have some cookies and refreshments and to let the principals shake their hands, but unfortunately, not this year. So we thank them all for their years of service.
Thank you. I think I added it up. I think it's 248 years?
Wow.
I'm not sure if my math was right. The virus may be causing my mask just to drop.
Very cute.
It's 262 years, but it is counted, so, yeah.
I missed somebody then. I will just say that normally, board members get to hand plaques to people. And so we often have fights over who we're gonna get to hand the plaque to. So we have to negotiate that very carefully. We always want to be able to honor all these folks who have worked for Loveland all these years, and we really do appreciate them. So, thank you.
I would just say that, you know, for many of these people, it's their life's work, or half their life's work. And it's work that's had great meaning, and I think we're all very appreciative of the service that you've all rendered. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think we are moving on to the next portion of the agenda, just for the point of information for our newer board members. We have in this section Board Reports, and those are all reports that are in, excuse me, yeah, Board Reports. They are from the Superintendent, the Treasurer, the Chief Information Officer, Department of Teaching and Learning, the Business Manager, and Principal Reports. And they are all included in board docs for your ability to read those ahead of the meeting. We have reports during the Superintendent and Treasurer updates where they give reports. But if you have any questions or any comments on any of these reports, you are welcome to add them at this point. It is just not a time when someone is going to be reading their report to us. So does anybody have any questions or discussion? There's a lot of information in those reports.
Kathy, this is the whole five section that you're talking to right now?
Yes, yes.
So I can't, maybe a couple of questions if I could?
Absolutely.
In, I guess it would be five four, Teaching and Learning. We begin with references to remote learning. And one of the questions I had was our ability to support students with remote technology. Are there any gaps that we're finding with students? Any issues that, you know, from a resource perspective that we're having, or are we able to support everybody?
Yeah, hi Kevin, great question. David Knapp here. I'm happy to speak to that. You know, as we've gone through this, and we're what, about two months in, two plus months in, it's definitely been an opportunity to better understand and become familiar with the needs that exist amongst all of our students. You know, when we think about typical access to technology, over the past four years, we've made a pretty significant investment in our technology infrastructure, starting with the Tiger One To World program, which has allowed us to, over time, establish those opportunities for students to have access to their own technology in grades seven through 12, and then to have classroom-based Chromebooks in our elementary grades, pre-K to six. So as a result of that, going into remote learning, we were very prepared. Seven through 12, all of our students already had their own device. Even those students who are in financial need, those students have been provided a device prior to that through the school. And through that process, we've also been able to identify 400, about, we're up to about 450 students now in grades pre-K through six, to those families who said we could really use some support in either getting a single piece of technology for our house, or we have multiple students doing remote learning at home, and we may need an additional Chromebook. So we think about that through the device piece. And actually, I'll have Department of Education is working through our local I T Cs. And those are the organizations that provide technological, technology support to schools. We work with a group called SLOCA. They're working with those organizations to establish needs across the state as it relates to this. So actually, we just did a pretty intense kind of data analysis within our own organization. So these numbers are kind of fresh with me. We've got about 10% of our students, of our 4,700-plus students, needing financial needs to a device. And about 2% of those students needing access to internet. Again, because of our investments leading up to now, those internet needs that had been identified for schools, Loveland has provided a mobile hotspot that attaches to their school device that allows them to gain access to the internet for their education. And we've actually been able to identify through this process about another 35 students that now have access to internet at home for remote learning purposes as well.
So if you were to summarize, does every student, I don't know if I'm, my connection looks like it's coming in and out, but would I leave this conversation thinking that every student has been cared for with respect to technological access in a remote learning environment? Or are there gaps that still need to be filled? And if we do have gaps, do we today have the financial resources? And if we don't, you don't have to do it right now, but maybe you could tell me what that looks like?
Sure. Yeah, I can, so speaking to the gap specifically, I can tell you that every effort has been made for outreach and connection with families by way of getting those devices and resources for those families that we've identified. Kevin, I would say if there's any gap, it's simply in identification. As, you know, we make those efforts for outreach and those pieces, and when those needs become known, those families we provide devices to. So I can't say for certain that we have 100% access out there, but for those needs that are known, we've definitely provided 100% of those needs. If that helps to clarify.
Okay, very good. I just, yeah, that's perfect, that's perfect. I just, you know, I'm not somebody who thinks that remote learning is perfect and the answer, but it clearly is gonna be an answer with what we and a lot of other people are gonna be doing in the future. And if we don't have the tools in place, you know, we're not able to serve the young people here. And that's, just trying to get to that point. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, Kevin, did you have other questions?
I do. I don't wanna dominate this, but I do have a couple more. Do you want me to go ahead or just let somebody else?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so this one might be for John. With the high school busing elimination, how do we feel about the parking capacity at the high school? Assuming that we'll have more young people driving to the campus? And just from a practical perspective, the families that now will have to provide to get their, I guess, freshmen and sophomores at least to school, how are they gonna do it? Are we able to help them in any way, et cetera? Are we getting feedback about it? Yeah, I'm not revisiting the busing question. I'm visiting on kind of the ramifications of busing reductions.
Okay, it's twofold. One, are the parents, are the students who need to have a ride from their parents to the school. I provided, I believe I provided each one of you a drawing, our first attempt to make students drop off a functional, a well-oiled machine. And it's being vetted by the high school. My internet connection is unstable. Can everybody, am I still on? Does anybody see me?
It's coming through. It's just a little lower quality.
Okay, so yes, we have, we're working on the methodology to get the parents in and out very quickly with the drop off of students. And at the same time, we are working on providing a sidewalk from Rich Road sidewalks up to the school that will be a safe sidewalk. That sidewalk connects over to Phillips Park, and a number of our students use Phillips Park. That parking lot comes and goes depending on time of year. In the fall, there are not a whole lot of kids driving or wanting to drive. But as the year goes on, and the kids turn 16 and parents get harder, then the parking lots become much fuller in the spring. So we are working with the city to make sure that the Phillips Park parking lots are available. The city has permitted us to use both parking lots on Boekey Park next door to the high school. And we are working with them to identify other methods to make sure that we get our students up there in the safest and just the easiest manner for everybody. There are no more additional parking lot or parking spaces at the high school. It is landlocked, and they manage, the high school manages parking passes. So I try not to step on that. But as I say, the city and us are working diligently to try to make sure it is a safe method. And acting that with Police Chief Ray the other day, just to make sure that what we were looking at doing fit what they expected us to do. So we're all working.
I saw the diagram. Seems to make a lot of sense. I just, you know, wonder, worry maybe a little bit, but wonder about parents that are at home saying, how am I gonna do this? How am I gonna get somebody to school? And whether we've got any ideas about helping them, making connections, whatever it's gonna be. Maybe there's no answer for it tonight, but it's just one of those things that I wonder about, you know, helping prepare the community for a change like this.
The city is, I mean, we've talked about a number of ways to make it safer. And they are, they are just very on board with whatever we can do to make it work. And I think really, we found that the first two weeks of school are, no matter which building it is, are very troubling just because there are so many new people in that facility that have not been there before. They don't know the traffic laws. And the city permits us to use their traffic officers and our SROs to help get the flow moving in the correct direction. And then once everybody kind of learns how it works, then it goes much smoother. So the first two weeks are always very interesting.
I'm ready to look for it, it's on my screen, so I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Okay, I see both. Oh, okay, yes. Eileen, did you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, my internet is freezing up on me.
There was anything?
Okay, so I'll save mine to see, and if you can't hear me, I guess I'll repeat it in a minute. So I have a comment and a question. My comment would be kind of a wrap of what Kevin was talking about as far as helping families out. Kevin and I have a son going into ninth grade next year, so I know the lack of busing is not ideal at all. And it's a conversation, and we've already started to have an out-to-teach in the Lakota School District, which had to eliminate busters many years ago. So I've witnessed that year after year, the struggle on the parent's heart. And what they do there, and what I forget to do here, is lots of networking and carpooling and starting to have the conversations within communities of who can help out, where and when. So like I said, it's not ideal, but I guess kind of where we are with that. And then my second thing is for John as far, in regards to cost for the sidewalk. Oh, sorry, my internet was a little stable again.
I have not, I started, well, I received a quote a number of years ago to do the sidewalk. And it was, my memory is $22,000. This one will be a little bit more complicated because we're having to cut it into a little bit of a hillside to make it come up on the north side of Tiger Trail. There is a significant rise in elevation, so it'll be a little bit more. And I'm going to say probably $25,000 to $30,000 to do that sidewalk. We are putting it at six feet wide. That will be out of the PI fund.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, correct?
Yeah, that's all PI fund. And the reason we're making it six feet wide, I don't know if you noticed the drawing, so that if we do have snow, we can run the snow plow truck over it rather than trying to do it with a tractor or something. So we'll be able to plow it quicker. Typically, we strive to make the sidewalk wide enough to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think the point that you were raising is that is
I think Kevin was trying to talk, but kind of freezing up a little bit. Hold on, I'm freezing up.
Yeah, why don't I just, why don't I just stop on that subject and just say kudos to the the LACC group, that art show that they, uh, videoed was wonderful. I was a parent at home. I would love seeing my child's artwork and I, I was very sensitive, uh, to, to, to go through the whole population, I guess. So, uh, whoever did that, uh, thank you. And whoever came up with, um, the, um, guest Pledge of Allegiance announcers, uh, at LES also nicely done. I think it's a, you know, the way you personalize something has become, uh, this video world a little, uh, more impersonal. So thank you, whoever did that.
Kevin, which art show was that you were referencing?
Lee, Lee, I have some thoughts. Sorry, Lee, I talked up for you. You say that again.
I just was curious, which art show was he referencing?
Uh, it's, I think it was at the, um, at the kindergarten's, uh, building. They, they had videoed the hallways that had, uh, all this individual pieces of artwork hung up. It looked like hallway after hallway, and they did the whole place and just, you know, it's a thoughtful thing and I, um, John, the other day, took me, um, on a tour of five of the six buildings. I think some of you know this. Um, and, uh, there, there's just, um, evidence of, um, human touches in a lot of different places. Uh, I was in some classroom. I don't remember which building it was, John might remember. Uh, but there's curtains on the women go. Uh, and my bet is that the, the district didn't pay for those curtains. But a teacher somewhere along the line, uh, you know, had it in her heart to make this a warmer place. Uh, and, you know, with everything, and I mean, I, I'm, I'm sounding a little touchy-feely right now and you're going to see the other side of me when we get to the money issues, but, uh, I, I never want to lose sight of, uh, the human beings that are putting their heart and soul into the mission of, of caring for our young people. So just thank you.
I appreciate the, the shout out, particularly to the art. I would say the art and music and PE have, um, those are really unusual positions. Not that remote learning was easy for anyone, but, uh, those, uh, those groups have really worked hard to try to engage the kids. Um, LACC is, John Hennig, that's the teacher there, um, but, you know, they, um, to a person, really worked hard to try and engage people and showcase our students' talents, uh, outside of the academic. So, and we appreciate the notice. Um, our staff has worked very hard at that.
You mentioned PE, Amy. I, I did appreciate the, uh, virtual field days that happened. Those were pretty creative and interesting. So that's another, another kudo to the PE department.
I saw broken eggs in people's front yards. I saw.
And Kevin, I'd be interested, um, Jen Farnum, the principal at LES, if she knows all of the people that she recruited for the Pledge of Allegiance at LES. And if so, I hope that I wanted to hang out with them. So, very, very cool.
The other, some, uh, pretty recognizable neck from that one. Very good.
Oh, for sure.
I'd like to apologize to our, I'd like to apologize to our audience on YouTube if you're seeing the same thing that we are seeing with, uh, screens freezing and, uh, having a little trouble with, uh, conversation. Um, so we probably will move on ahead if it's all right with the board and move on to the superintendent, uh, update. Dr. Kraus, you are frozen on at least my screen.
Uh, can you hear me?
I can hear you. You're not moving, but I can hear you.
Maybe I'm just very stiff. Um, all right. I, I, I have two things. Uh, one, um, in, we'll just transition right into celebrations. We talked, uh, the administrative team talked early in remote learning about, um, how do we make sure that we work hard to make sure that we do the celebrations and the recognitions and the closures for students, even though they're remote? But those are just our priority. And, um, you know, we turned people loose and you have seen the evidence of some of those things. There were some drive-bys today where people said goodbye. I saw people with their, with their windows painted, when they came to say goodbye to teachers. Um, really, you know, really trying to create that end of school, uh, feel. Um, I, uh, I want to do, um, two shout-outs, uh, speak, two smaller shout-outs before I talk about graduation, which I want to talk about. Uh, but, um, one, our transportation department, uh, put together, um, a recognition for, uh, class of twenty-twenty. And, um, in a world of viruses, um, to talk about going viral, um, uh, back to the good connotation of that, um, that has been picked up and, uh, really, um, shared, uh, um, around, uh, uh, at a national level. Um, what I want to say about that is that, um, that, that was completely transportation-driven. Uh, it was their idea and, uh, um, you know, we're just got out of their way. Uh, they contacted Jim Barrett, who is another person that I would like to do a shout-out to. Jim Barrett, uh, uh, is our photography teacher. He teaches in our, um, in our arts department. He does photography in our high school. Uh, but he is also our drone private master. I don't know what's the right term, but he, he, he does the drone work. Um, so, you know, they contacted Jim and he helped create that, um, that drone, uh, photo for them uh, that has become so popular and that it's gotten, um, so much recognition nationally. Um, that also goes on to, uh, Jim Barrett, uh, is a good segue into, uh, the man behind the scenes, uh, for graduation. Um, the high school, um, pull in the other. I'll talk about well-oiled machine. There are three hundred ninety-two graduates, three hundred and seventy-five families walked through for their own individual personal graduation, um, throughout the course of the day on Saturday. Uh, Jim, um, is now editing that video so that, uh, next week, we can have that close captioned and out, um, so that people can watch other students walk across the stage and, and get some of that experience. You'll see some of that drone work in there. Um, it was just really an amazing day. Um, I couldn't even begin to start the list of people who contributed into organizing that, but the high school took that challenge on and, um, unbelievable. Um, we, um, I got to be part of that, um, all day. And, uh, I, it was so, it was so wonderful to spend those moments with every family of graduating seniors. And then I, I took one bathroom break and washed my hands quick and did not miss a family. And it was so wonderful, but I didn't look to see what time it was until seven fifteen that night. Um, twelve hours passed and I, I didn't even notice. That's how great it was. Uh, and I don't know what time the last graduate went through. I'm going with eight-thirty. There was a little rush at the end because we had a little lightning storm coming up. So we, we arranged to get some families in, um, at least staging them in. Um, but, uh, you know, families waited in a queue, the outside staff cheered them on. There was a celebration while they were waiting in their cars. Uh, when they parked and they entered, they were able to go through the giant inflatable tiger that we use for athletes. And there was a photo op. They came in, were photo ops along the way, um, where they then, uh, got from us there, we checked their name. And, uh, I delivered them to a teacher, delivered them to Mrs. Chat, or Mrs. Chat, but we delivered them to Mrs. Johnson, who escorted them for them to have their own individual family graduation with the stage. And, uh, it was, uh, we sanitized, I've been telling staff to sanitize the stairwell, well, three hundred and seventy-five times. Uh, and then they went through and got their diploma and turned in their cap and gown. Um, and it was, it was a great day. And I know that the tradition of being together was something that people, um, lost, but I believe that, that what they gained was, um, you know, uh, some special moments with families. Uh, it was a great day from beginning to end. Uh, so I, I don't, I don't know that any of you got to participate in that, but I hope that you heard some of the wonderful things, certainly Twitter and Facebook were, um, a buzz with, uh, the day. Any, did anybody have any, um, questions or comments about how we were able to honor our graduates this year in this unusual situation? I'm not sure what's happening with our actual gear. Seventy-two people all just. Think, I'm, I'm seeing that Zoom is having a national issue and so we're just the lucky recipients of that, I guess.
Yes.
So.
The situation was great. Thank you, Amy.
I was just lucky enough to participate. Um, and the parents for their patience, it was amazing. Uh, the other, uh, the other one is talking about next year. So we have asked for, um, we, a couple of things are going on in, in our plans. So we have a question document of, uh, these are the questions that you have related to, oops, service. These are the questions that you may have related to a classroom, transportation, uh, cleaning, all these different buckets. And the teachers and the staff are adding their own questions to those. We will use those as part of planning the structure for moving forward so that we're trying to capture everyone's thoughts and questions about how next year is going to look. We have also asked for feedback from, uh, families, uh, students and, uh, staff about the instructional part of remote learning. What went well, what didn't, some input into that. We do not have guidance for next year. We don't know what our protocols will be. We've not received that from the state. Um, so it is difficult to be real clear about what next year will look like. Uh, but what the administrative team has organized is a team of administrators and teachers to work through some big ideas. Um, here's what remote learning could look like. Here's what a hybrid would look like. Here's what in-person might look like. Um, and when I say might, I mean, understanding that we don't know, uh, the parameters. Um, we don't know if, um, you know, we can sort of look at other areas of operations to make some guesses, but, uh, we don't know what transportation will look like. If we can only have fifteen students on a bus, that's going to change the way we do business. Um, if we can only have nine kids in a classroom, that changes the way we do business. So we don't have any of that yet. So we're going to plan, we're going to plan up those big ideas, meaning, you know, it's some, in, in some way, shape or form, either for a length of time or for, or for some families. Um, all time, a remote option. We will need, um, an in-person option and, and to figure out how we would do that with distancing and masks and the things related to that. And then we need some sort of hybrid, um, that either captures, uh, changes in what rules would be or expectations would be from the state or captures, um, different needs in different families. So we're trying to create some big buckets with the staff so that we can then go to work, um, over the summer within those parameters. Um, once those big buckets are established, our intention is to ask for, uh, family feedback about which of those options would they take part in, uh, so that we could begin to plan and staff for those. Um, and, and work through some of that. So, uh, we're, right now, we are gathering feedback. Uh, we will start beginning Monday uh, with the work with the principals and the staff on developing those and putting some enough meat on those so that we can communicate that back out to get feedback. And we'll be asking for community, um, our family interest and feedback and questions, um, about that, um, here in June. Uh, what we want is to be able to leave in June with a, a, a fairly clear idea of what might happen, how we might respond, how we would respond to things that might happen, if that's vague enough for you, and then, um, be responsive enough as guidance changes, um, over the summer. When we have talked, I am fortunate enough on, um, every Friday morning to be with a group of superintendents and the Hamilton County Public Health, um, will report to us. And by all accounts, August is just too long, too far away for them to give us any clear guidance about what things will look like. Um, you know, we can make some obvious guesses and start to clear for some of those. And we gotta push, uh, the ODE as a group of superintendents, um, uh, as legislative legislators and push the ODE to, to give us at least some guidance so that we can make plans. Uh, because when guidance is restricted, it costs money and it costs, um, uh, it takes, it, it takes time to, uh, to figure that out that we can provide the best education. You know, we know that the remote education that happened this fourth order, um, was, is the best we could do. We flipped that over in about five, you know, in school world, five minutes. Um, it was challenging for families. It was challenging for teachers. It was, it was extremely challenging for students. So we know that that was not the best. Uh, it is what we were able to offer. We want to be able to create a situation where we can meet the needs of students. Um, you know, we had the added benefit at this point of going remote after teachers had built relationships with their kids. They already knew them. They already, um, understood how they learned and knew how to reach out. The idea of starting remotely without having those relationships faces a completely different challenge, um, on, on that. So, so that's our plan to move forward and we should be able to communicate that back out mid-June, uh, mid-June to families. Are there any questions about that? They're all frozen, which means I don't know that you can continue.
Amy, has the governor given us any indication when he might issue his new budget for, uh, coming year?
The Ju, the budget?
Yes.
Is that what you asked about the budget?
Yes. Doesn't he have a new one coming out July first?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Can everybody hear me okay before I start?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's so, so if you're familiar with the, the state budget, it's a biennial budget. So it's every two years. Uh, the first year of the biennial was this current fiscal year that we're in right now. So next year is year two. So at this point in time, typically, what you'll see, and we'll talk about it a little bit more in the five-year forecast conversation, but typically what you'll see is the budget stays away the same way year over year. So for your question, uh, Michelle, it's, it's not necessarily that the, uh, the budget should change from last year for typical reasons because it's the second year of that budget. Um, there is a potential that it can change based on where sales tax and income tax are coming in. Um, so they've seen through April, uh, May is typically released the tenth. Both of those reports are released the tenth of the month. So early June, they'll have a good idea of what opening up Ohio at least a little bit has done for, uh, for their receipts, uh, for tax revenue. But, you know, if there's any anticipation, as we have been told at this point in time, if they are going to make any changes to next year, probably it'll be sometime in July.
Okay.
Any other questions about how, how we're planning for, um, for the, for the every, the permutations on this are crazy. So if, however, how we're attacking the problems, probably that question.
It's the era of trying to be recognized.
Well, I'm glad that you could see me. Um, Amy, I, I, this is, you're right. There's too many unknowns right now and it's so difficult to plan in an era where things can change from week to week. Um, is there any clarity as to what state-level guidance? Is there any clarity as to what state level guidance actually means for us? Is guidance just that and we're still allowed to make our own decisions? Or are we locked into the guidance that they provide? And if their guidance is third graders have to wear masks, third graders have to wear masks?
Yes. So there, there will be, there will be must use. And they, I, I do know that the O D E is working with legislature to maintain local control because we have to solve individual problems, you know. People have different resources in different situations. And if you're in a rural district that has, you know, a huge amount of space, it's different than if you are in the city. So, you know, there'll be, there'll be a fair amount of local control, the local decision making. The, the things that will not be optional will be the recommendations from the Board of Health. So the distancing, how many kids can be in a space, masks, those kinds of things. We have provided, and by we, I mean, superintendents have provided to the O D E and to our advocate with legislators to talk about some of our concerns about fully related C D C guidelines. The C D C guidelines indicate things like, I'll give you, I'll give you a secondary example. Students should not change rooms nor should the teacher. Well, that's a little challenging if you think about a high school schedule and I teach A P English and you teach calculus. And if we're not going to be switching classrooms, that's going to be challenging. The guidance about wearing, about distancing, maybe, maybe we can get high school students to distance because they're grown, but I would like you, I would invite you to imagine a kindergarten classroom and how that might look. So, you know, that we also have concerns about, about cloth masks rather than clear masks. When I think about teaching young people to read, you know, teaching children how to hold their mouth, you know, how to, you know, just to articulate, not to mention the, the non-verbal communication that we do, we use with children to build culture in our classrooms. So, you know, we, we've asked for some flexibility. Safety is our number one priority. Of course, we want to follow the safety guidelines. Don't, I won't just misunderstand that I'm trying to get around those. They're just restrictions that will be challenging to overcome in order to teach children, you know, at all different, you know, at all different levels. But when the Board of Health, the, the health rules will be the mandated non-negotiables would be my prediction, Eric.
Thanks for the explanation. I, I think you, you see much more than the rest of us, but everybody sees the problems of balancing safety and education.
Safety first always, but, you know, there's, I see language in the C D C guidelines that say when feasible. And you're like, I mean, I hate to say things are not feasible, but like come to a kindergarten classroom. Like feasibility of, you know, and, you know, we, you know, it's one thing to say we went through graduation and didn't shake anybody's hands. That's different. You know, kindergartners fall down, like we, like we touch children. They, I mean, they're little kids. We're caring for them. You know, and that's a, there's just some challenges that we'll have to work through. And obviously we will work through them, but, you know, there's, there's an element of, of protecting children's experience too, you know, in that. It, it will be a challenge. We're going to start at the instructional level and really try to think about what's the best way to offer instruction in a remote, in, in a, while we're here, in remote, in a hybrid. And we're going to start with just instruction first. And then as that guidance comes through, try to figure that out. We started this way with, you're all remote, without any ability to really think about what, what that might look like from an instructional standpoint, which has been, you know, a bit of a crapshoot. So we're going to start with our teacher leaders now about what, you know, what would quality instruction look like in those areas? And how can we then support it and, and back into some of the safety leading with instruction with students first? And, you know, there's the social emotional needs of students.
To me, it is, it's a very heavy lift. And, and the way that I think about it is you can never avoid cost. You know, there, there's always a cost. And the cost of absolute safety is removing some of the, the social interaction that's necessary for effective teaching. So it, it's a challenging, good luck and we're here to support you however we can.
I mean, we fortunately, I mean, you know, fortunately, we're all in the same boat. We all have, you know, we all have our groups. You know, I have my superintendent group. There's teaching learning group. You heard David say there's a technology group. There's a treasurer's group. Like we're all with our people, trying to group solve them together and, and share solutions to those things. Some of the bigger districts have more people to generate some, generate some templates and generate some of those things. People have been very generous and sharing. We of course are, you know, we're, we're very generous and sharing. There is an element, there's, there is, we're very lucky in our region about competition. Everybody wants to have great scores. Everyone wants to win the football game. Everyone wants to do those things. But when it comes to like best practice and doing what's right for kids, this is a great region for us to be in. We have lots of access to partners and friends and colleagues to think in different ways about things. We're really lucky to have those consortium groups to do that with.
Thanks for the update.
Thanks, Amy. Okay. Well, then at the end of the superintendent update, there are superintendent resolutions. And this evening, there is just one resolution, which is a motion to approve the board policies that are listed there. Those board policies came to the board for a first reading at our last meeting. And so this is the, the second reading of those policies. Is there a motion to approve those? I see Ms. Pettit waving her hand and I will second that motion. I can report to you as was reported when they were, when they came up for the first reading. The changes in these are, they did not even go through the policy committee. They came as legal recommendations for changes on these. It is language that is necessary to meet the, the state requirements for graduation, for gifted education and identification and the, badges, what are the word? Now I'm not thinking of the right word. The certifications that are able to happen, pathways to graduation. So that's what these policies are about.
The third policy is about students that are at risk for not graduating. It is a pretty prescriptive policy about making sure there's a plan in place for students who are at risk to graduate. Those were procedures and things that we had in place already at the high school. So we simply adjusted our procedures to make sure that we will match in that policy.
Any questions? All right. We do have a motion and a second, correct? I'm not losing my train of thought here. Mr. Holly, can we vote on that?
Dr. Swisherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Motion carried. We then move in, if we're, if we're all right, moving from the superintendent portion, we will move into the treasurer portion of the meeting and Mr. Holly's presentation on the five year forecast.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Lorenz. Hold on a second here, I'll turn the screen. All right. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for those who are at home watching. We are going to go over the five year forecast today. Just before we get started though, just so everybody knows who's at home, the five year forecast is available in Word docs, which is the online system that we utilize for the board meetings in particular. So there's a lot.